Yet, but artist Naoki Urasawa is considered by many to be the modern master of Japanese manga, or comics. We spoke to fans in Hollywood.
Monster is easily one of the best mangas of all time.
In his work, many of his work, it goes around the world, showing different cultures, people from different backgrounds.
Japan House Los Angeles, located in the Hollywood and Highland Complex, is proud to present this exhibit through March. And the beauty is, even if you can't understand Japanese, the panels are all in English, so Americans can come and truly appreciate them. The reader's always ready to turn the page, or wanting to turn that page to see what happens next. Curator Trast Howard describes the popular series Monster, a morality tale about a surgeon who saves the life of a serial killer.
What Urasawa is so good at is that he throws in these twists that you don't expect.
Urasawa has sold over 127 million books in Japan alone. He's nominated for an Eisner Hall of Fame induction at Comic Con this year, an honor usually reserved for American comic book creators like Stan Lee. Urasawa's works, such as 20th Century Boys, dealing with terrorism, can be dark, but he has lighter fare, too.
Yawara is a story about a young teenage female judo athlete, influenced, interested not only the sport, but a particular judo athlete.
When real-life judo champ Ryoko Tamura represented Japan in the 1992 Olympics, the public embraced her as the real-life Yawara. It was also a time when more Japanese women began entering the workforce and establishing their independence.
And what was actually happening in Japan in the society at the time, and I think that's what really piqued everyone's interest.
Historical events influencing fiction. This is Manga, the art of Naoki Urasawa in his first North American exhibit. That's at Japan House at the Hollywood and Highland Complex at 6801 Hollywood Boulevard.
Want to check out more cultural events from Japan House? Learn more at JapanHouse.JP. What do you get when you mix hundreds of volunteers, hundreds of cookies, and hundreds of goodie bags? Well, Big Sunday's annual Valentine-making dinner, of course. This nonprofit is all about putting a smile on the faces of those less fortunate. Take a look.
Today is our seventh annual Big Sunday Valentine's Day. Nobody should be forgotten on Valentine's Day. Making cards, we're making little gift bags, there's tons of chocolate going on and flowers going on. And all these nice people have come here to make Valentines for other people. Old folks, people in shelters, people in group homes, veterans, people who are ailing.
I was specifically thinking about some of the people in hospitals and maybe even nursing homes, because my dad just moved into a nursing home a year ago. And so for me, it's really personal, because when I get to go visit him, I see how few of those people have families all around them, or are getting, you know, things for the holidays. We're just here to help out and have fun.
I believe that it's a wonderful thing to teach our kids to give back to those much fortunate than ourselves, and it just makes you feel so good. It fills your heart.
If it brightens somebody's day by looking at a simple card, by just saying we care or love you, that makes my day.
When we do something, because we feel like we have to, it kind of brings one energy to it. But when we do something because we know that it, like, we get something out of it, too, I don't know, I think it just infuses everything, which is that fun and loving energy that we can put more of in the world.
We call it Big Sunday, because we used to be one day a year, on a Sunday, but we have grown. We first became a weekend, and then a three-day weekend, now we do things 365 days a year. The idea is that absolutely everybody has some way they can help somebody else. We connect people through helping.
We're all really connected, no matter what we look like, or where we are in our life, there's something that just runs through all of us.
And over in Silmar, hundreds of seniors also got some well-deserved TLC, as Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez hosted a Valentine's Day ball in their honor. Let the dancing begin.
We have arrived in Funky Town, the great community of Silmar, hosting a day of dining and dancing for some 400 seniors on Valentine's Day. Many of the guests are longtime married couples like Jose and Linda Anaya. When you first saw her, what did you think?
She's mine.
It took a little while, but I totally fell in love with them, and still in love with them today.
Older adults loving life and each other at Palacio Torres Banquet Hall. This party was thrown by Silmar Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez.
It really is a unique opportunity for me to bring together all of the seniors from around my district, because each of the senior centers are located in different parts of the community, that we bring them all here together to celebrate Valentine's Day, show a little love, and bring some of the resources that are available to them, whether it's advising them on their Medicare options, or just all the variety of service providers that we have.
A little wet weather outside didn't stop these older adults from stepping in out of the rain and onto the dance floor. They all to themselves. So our seniors, God bless them, they bring to us a wealth of experience. I asked some of them on this Valentine's Day, what is the secret to everlasting love? Your opposites.
Yeah, we're opposite. He's quiet and I'm the... I act too much.
That's the secret.
Yeah.
Have a good match there.
Yeah.
What's your secret?
Say yes.
Oh, so smart. Easy, he's sweet.
Raul and Barbara Fontenilles have been happily married for 54 years. They're also the in-laws of Councilwoman Rodriguez.
We love her like a daughter.
And it helps a lot to be family-oriented. It's keeping us together.
Always be affectionate to each other. A lot of times that goes away in a marriage, and I think it needs to be that way till the day you die. Always and forever.
Electric Lodge is an environmentally friendly cultural arts hub and educational center in Venice. We recently took a tour with the Electric Lodge founder, Joel Shapiro.
The Electric Lodge started in 1996. I started it then. I rebuilt the whole building, and it's been going ever since. It's a visual and performing arts center and environmental center. We have theater, dance, music, film festivals, all kinds of performance art. We have classes seven days a week and theater upstairs. This is a solar-powered space. We produce about a third of our power on the roof, and we buy only green power from DWP.
The Electric Lodge is a wonderful place. It's benefited so many young students. The vibe is good.
Tonight, we're putting on a variety show called Next 10, so that's one of the things we do here every first Monday of the month. We have 10 people participating for 10 minutes each, and it's a really cool and fun audience participation-type show that almost anyone can enter.
Unfortunately, people know almost nothing about the Electric Lodge, and that is such a shame, because it's such a great community venue. And, oh, and, there is a parking lot. There's a parking lot in Venice. So if you do not live in Venice and you think to yourself, "No, I am not going to Venice to see anything," come to the Electric Lodge, because it's got its own lot. You don't have to worry about it.
Batter's up. Did you know there was a Wrigley Field in Los Angeles? As part of African-American Heritage Month, Councilmember Kern Price joins us for a tour of the stadium's impact on our community.
The original Wrigley Field opened on September 29, 1925, in the heart of Council District 9, on the corner of Avalon Boulevard and 42nd Place. It was constructed by William L. Wrigley, Jr., the founder of Wrigley's Gum and owner of the Chicago Cubs. It was built at a cost of just under $1 million. It hosted major league baseball teams in the region for over 30 years. Wrigley Field was home to the Los Angeles Angels during their inaugural season in 1961. Over the years, Wrigley Field's hosted rodeos, concerts, fireworks, and other special events. The ballpark was even used as a backdrop for several Hollywood films about baseball, as well as the popular TV series Home Run Derby.
Ball, way down to the field line, and that's all in the second inning. Harmon Killebrew picks up a homerun and leads Mickey Mantle in the home run derby contest at the end of an inning and a half of play by a score of 1 to 0.
On May 26, 1963, Martin Luther King was at Wrigley Field to address nearly 40,000 people at one of the largest civil rights rallies in the country, predating the famous 1963 March on Washington by almost three months. Wrigley Field is still remembered as the place where Dr. King stated, "Birmingham or Los Angeles, the cry is always the same: We want to be free."
Birmingham, Alabama, or Los Angeles, California, the cry is always the same: We want to be
His efforts that evening to connect Los Angeles to Birmingham helped to raise significant and desperately needed funds for the March on Washington, and to assist in supporting the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. In 1969, Wrigley Field was demolished. In its place now exist the Gilbert Lindsay Community Park, the Teresa Lindsay Senior Center, and the Kedron Community Health Center. As we celebrate African-American Heritage Month, we not only pay tribute to individuals, but also celebrate the locations where historical events helped to define our legacy and change
Councilmember Paul Krikorian hosts a community town hall. Get ready to catch some air at a new skate park and learn how to raise funds for your nonprofit. All this in City B. Councilmember Paul Krikorian recently hosted a town hall meeting in North Hollywood, which allowed community members direct access to the LA Department of Public Works. One goal was to make residents aware of available programs and services they may not be taking full advantage of.
To hear from them directly about what is important in their neighborhood, what's important in their community.
In South LA, the CD9 Business Resource Center presented a forum on funding for nonprofits. The event featured presentations by several leading foundations, and included panel discussions, Q&amp;As, and more.
I came here because we're a nonprofit organization, and we're always looking for funding sources.
And now you can catch some air of your own. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell broke ground on the new Chevy Chase Skate Park. When complete, the park will feature 8,000 square feet of spiffy concrete skate features, as well as improvements to the surrounding areas. Happy Lunar New Year. It was a melting pot of Chinese, Korean, and Vietnamese culture, as thousands of folks came together for the 120th Golden Dragon Parade.
I want to wish everybody Gung Hap Choy, a great and prosperous New Year here in the fresh and busy downtown United States of America. A great Happy New Year.
Also, it's the Year of the Pig, and it's a very social pig. It's about reminding us to get together with our neighbors, with our community, with our country and the world, together, in peace and harmony.
This is an incredible time, steeped in deep traditions and history, but a holiday that we're all looking forward with great optimism and positivity.
It's so nice to see everybody coming together as a community to celebrate such a momentous occasion for the New Year.
Enjoy an evening of music that includes a vacuum cleaner, listen to some live jazz at a pop-up, and if you love chocolate and art, you won't want to miss this show. All this and things to do. And the beat goes on, as Compose LA brings you Leah Mooney's Flatland. This latest music symposium is happening at the Coaxial Arts Foundation. The presentation will include an examination of Leah Mooney's sound-driven investigation of materiality. Be sure to check out Compose LA: Leah Mooney's Flatland on Friday, February 22, beginning at 8:00 PM. The Coaxial Arts Foundation is located at 1915 South Main Street. For more info, visit coaxialarts.org. Black History Month festivities continue with Just Jazz Live Concert Series. This free pop-up jazz event features performances by local jazz collective Catalyst, and music from the Fernando Palom Community Arts Center Jazz Ensemble. Swing by the Just Jazz Live Pop-Up Event, happening Thursday, February 21, at 6:30 PM. The performance takes place at the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza on 3650 West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. For more info, visit JustJazzLiveConcertSeries.com. The Chocolate and Art Show returns to Los Angeles. Indulge in some of LA's finest up-and-coming artists, photographers, and creators. Enjoy live body painting, vendors, music, and free chocolate. It's all happening at the Chocolate and Art Show Los Angeles, coming February 22 and 23. The show will take place at the Vortex, located at 2341 East Olympic Boulevard. For details, contact chocolateandart@gmail.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
MyLA311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app. Available from the App Store or on Google Play. MyLA311 links Angelenos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even Senior Citizen Center. Request graffiti removal. Keep up with what's going on at City Hall. And even report illegal dumping. MyLA311 puts the power of City Hall in the palm of your hands. Don't worry, Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning, good morning. Want to welcome everybody to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council. We're gonna have exciting day. We've had, we have two great presentations this morning. The public is here. This is gonna be a good day. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Buscaino Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weiser Coetz, Krikorian Martinez, O'Farrell, Price Rodriguez, Rue Smith, Wesson, 11 members present, and our quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Krikorian moves, and Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves, and Harris Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item nine for 30 days to March 22nd.
So ordered, continue.
Items one through nine are items for which public hearings have been held. The Economic Development Committee report for item eight has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, well, why don't we prepare to vote on those items? If you would please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentation, sir general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Buscaino, would you come to the president's chair? We've just been joined by one of our commissioners, Jimmy Woods Gray. Give Jimmy a round of applause. Commissioner, come up here, come down and sit with everybody else.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send item five forthwith.
Mr. Wesson, the floor is yours.
Mr. President and members, today I have a very exciting presentation about an individual who's provided a lifetime of service to the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, the state of California, and the United States of America. I'd like to ask for a round of applause for Bobby Jean Anderson. Come on. And I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Bobby to come on up, and I want to bring the family. In fact, this is a partial, but let's try to kinda get around here. Come on, Bobby, and others. I mean, we're family. And just get on around, get some people over on this side. Rosa, you can kinda be in the second line, since you're, since you're so tall. The second line. Ladies and gentlemen, people that are visiting us today in the council chambers, and to the president, and the, you guys listening here, Jimmy, come on over here. Gail, come on over here. It may take us a minute, but we'll get it going. Gloria Gray, a history maker herself, is with us today. You know, I'm gonna, I rarely have notes, but the reason why I have some notes today is because Bobby's life is full of accomplishments, so I may look down from time to time. But I think it's fitting, too, that this is Black History Month, and we're honoring somebody who has been an integral part of black history in the city of Los Angeles. You know, sometimes when you look at history, you hear the names of great people who have done this, that, and the other, but the reality of the situation, it's not the big ministers, and it's, you know, it's not the elected officials, it's the people, it's the folk on the street, it's ordinary people that have a lifetime of doing extraordinary things. And that's the woman that I present to you today. Back in the late 80s, I want to say around 1989, the state decided to extend the, I believe it was the 110 freeway. So in order to do that, they had to displace people. Now, Bobby understood, you know, progress, but she wanted to ensure that she and her neighbors received a fair amount of compensation. So she got engaged, organized the community, and had the assistance of somebody that maybe some of you may have heard of. She was a small, little assembly person at the time, and if I remember Bobby, her name was Maxine Waters. So she joined with Bobby and about 200 people, and they fought this, and they fought for fair compensation. And they, I think the rules of the game changed at that point in time, and people after that now get better compensation packages based on the work that was done back in 1989 by this woman that's to my right. But what happened at that time, it woke up a beast, okay? It woke up a beast. It created one of the greatest community activists that we've ever seen in this area. Now, if she only did one thing, that would be something, but as I go through this, you're gonna find out that somehow, some way, she wore five or six different hats. She was engaged in union, with the union. In fact, Mr. Sadio is here, right, who worked with Bobby. He was the general, the general manager. But most people think that it was a performer named Prince who made purple beautiful. But I'm submitting to you guys that it was Gil Sadio, Bobby Anderson, and a labor organization called 660 of SEIU, where Bobby was a member, and worked there as a shop steward, and then became on the executive council, and did that for decades. Then she decided that she should also be involved in actual politics. So one of the oldest, if not the oldest African-American democratic club in west of the Mississippi was the New Frontier Democratic Club. So Bobby has been engaged with that organization for probably almost three decades. She today is still in charge of publicity and works very closely with our own commissioner, Mike Davis. But what you should also know, that she served three terms as president of the New Frontier Democratic Club. She is one of a handful of people that I know that has been an elected delegate to the National Democratic Convention five times, elected five times. I think it started in 92 all the way through 2012. On top of that, somehow, she managed to have a son, okay, and had three grandchildren, one of which is with us today, and a boy and a girl, right?
Great granddaughter.
Oh, and now I'm just, she's got a great granddaughter as well. But on top of that, she was also engaged with the County Democratic Party, where she was vice chair up until her retirement, which was this past December. What we're talking about is a lifetime of service. What we're talking about is an individual that would give you the shirt off of her back if you needed it. If she had two cookies, she'd give you one. That's just who she is, and she's one of the nicest people that I've ever met in my life. But with that, don't piss her off. Don't get on her wrong side. I did that once, and I'm still trying. I walk in a room, and I could feel her eyes on, so I have done everything that I could. If I could get a time machine, take it back to that point in time, trust me, I would handle it differently. I cannot say enough about the service that she has provided to our community, to my community, where I live, to all of the people in the city of Los Angeles. We are so proud of her. She is an honorable person. No one has ever, ever questioned her ability or her commitment, and I just think that it is very fitting that as we near the end of Black History Month, that we celebrate an individual that represents all of the people that really affect change, not just here, but in this entire nation. It's people like Bobby Andersons from New York to California that moved this country in the right direction. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to present to you my friend with her posse, Bobby Anderson. Let's give her a round of applause.
Mr. Wesson, we have, we have members, we have speakers on the queue, so.
Okay, I would, I would think with Bobby being here, there would be people on the queue. But I do want to do something first before I forgive. Brother Johnson, where is the state commendation? Just the state. Okay, now, we have, Michelle Chambers is here representing Assembly Member Mike Gibson, who's a dear friend of mine, and on behalf of the state of California and Assembly Member Mike Gibson, I do want to present Bobby with this certificate of recognition. So let's give Mike Gibson a round of applause. It's obvious he doesn't want her eyes on his back.
Thank you, congratulations.
So before I finish this up, I defer back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. First speaker up is Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sharon. Thank you, Mr. Wesson, for bringing this great presentation this morning. As a part of our Black History celebration, so we've had April Verrett, we've had the Black Stuntmen, we've had basically anybody black who was on TV in the 70s, we've just had a host of people, and it's so great today to be here with you, Bobby Jean, and your crew. When I think of you, I remember Sly Stone, Sly Stone's song, Everyday People.
Yeah.
It's everyday people that hold up the sky and make the community a place where we can live and grow and thrive. And so, I just want to, on behalf of all the residents of the 8th District and your neighborhood especially, thank you for everything that you've done. Every time there's been an important fight, when you walk in the room, Bobby Jean is there and has already talked to everybody before you get into the room. And every time there's a fight, you can have no doubt, Mr. President, whether you're on her side or not, you know that Bobby Jean is fighting for the community. It is not for personal gain, or for to build her organization, or anything like that. And so, we really truly appreciate what you offer, and we appreciate you. I think today, we have almost all of the commissioners from the 8th Council District are standing up there with you, Mr. President, so we thank you for your service as a commissioner, but most of all, we thank you for loving and taking care of the community for all these years.
And you know, Mr. President, before you call on the next speaker, I'm glad that Mr. Harris Dawson reminded me of the commissioners that are Ms., Mr. Harris Dawson reminded me of, uh, the Commissioners that are here. Because what I left out of Bobby's bio is that she was appointed to the Police Commission's uh, Permit Review Panel by Mayor Bradley. Uh, and she was then reappointed by Mayor Riordan. She was also appointed to serve on President Bill Clinton's Criminal Justice Task Force and by Mayor Hahn. She was appointed to the Commission on the Status of Women and also, uh, for an organization that is very near and dear to my heart, that fights every day to protect women who are victims of domestic violence. She's been a volunteer and a board member for the Genesee Center for 30 years. Let's give her another round of applause.
Indeed, indeed.
And, and one more, uh, Mr. President, uh, so, uh, not to be taught by Assembly Member Mike, uh, Gibson, uh, Assembly Member, Assembly, Assembly Member Reggie Jones Sawyer, our Assemblyperson for the 59th District, appointed, uh, Bobby Jean Woman of the Year for the, for 2018. So we want to recognize that as well.
All right.
All right.
Oh, he's up to sing.
And everything we love.
Next up, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and Mr. President, this is so exciting to, to honor, uh, Bobby Jean, a real, a real She-Ro, uh, in, in our community. Uh, and it doesn't matter if it's, uh, with the Union or the Democratic Party, with the community, you know, Bobby, Bobby's there. Uh, and, you know, sometimes I, uh, certainly had the support of Bobby, but there were other times, Mr. President, where I had those eyes in the back of my back.
I know them eyes.
But you know, but you knew she was always committed to the community, for the betterment of the community, making things better. So Bobby, we just appreciate you, we care about you, uh, we love you. Thank you for your contribution and thank you for being such a positive role model for us.
Amen.
Especially during Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Rodriguez, followed by Mr. Sadio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Wesson, thank you so much for bringing in this incredible woman. Uh, I am very proud to know Bobby Jean and appreciate so much your legacy and history of contribution of service to our city, to our nation. Um, but honestly, you really represent the hard questions, and I'm grateful that I've never had the eyes on my back. I don't ever want to experience that. But I just appreciate your honesty, but your service, uh, through New Frontier, through the LACDP, everything that you do is really deeply rooted in service. And it's no surprise that as a woman, you have been a champion in the community as long as you have been. And I look at the, I look at all the Commissioners, I see Gail and Rosa and every, everybody that is here today, who have continued to be and given of themselves in service. And I am just so honored that, you know, you are getting the recognition that you are so deserving of, uh, because of your just tireless commitment to our community, and so I appreciate you. And Gloria, I think we should just get you a parking space here. You've been here, like, you know, you've been here quite a bit, but it's, it's really, it's just, it's beautiful to, to see you getting the recognition that you deserve, and I'm just, I'm so grateful to know you and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sadio.
Yeah.
Let me echo the, uh, comments of everyone. Uh, first of all, let me begin by thanking you for your friendship over decades. Um, and your support, particularly when I was at Local 660. Those were some very glorious years for us. Breakthrough. I remember the, uh, 88 Jackson Campaign, Jesse Jackson's Campaign. I remember the Rolling Thunder.
Yep.
And you're right, uh, Mr. President, uh, we did, you know, sport that purple and gold first before anybody. SEIU made it their national colors, but it started first with Rolling Thunder. Uh, and so those years were incredible, uh, as a shop steward and as a contract committee leader and all the roles you played at the Union. It was so critical for us, because those were difficult years where the country was going in one direction and we were turning it back to where it needed to be. And so, uh, it's easier today. Everybody replicates what we did during that time period, but, uh, as was stated, it was you and Patsy Howard and all our stewards and, and that did it, uh, that made it happen. And so, uh, May Thomas, that made it happen.
May.
And, uh, so you carried, you carried me on your shoulders. I'm the beneficiary of that, but it was you. And, uh, I remember so many conversations that we would have, and, uh, I just can't thank you enough for your friendship. Uh, and then later, when I moved into politics and elected office, uh, you've always been there. And particularly my first run here was a little challenging. Someone had snuck around and tried to snatch up the, uh, support of the party. Someone had never been to a convention or a club meeting or supported anybody other than themselves, and, uh, I called you for both counsel and support, and you were there. And, um, you know, it's just been great because you're a stalwart. And you're a stalwart of the black community, but you're a stalwart of the Democratic community. You're a stalwart of all that's good in terms of civic participation and being a good citizen. And so, uh, I enjoy, you know, every time I, we're going someplace, I know where you're gonna be there when we go to conventions, when we go to national conventions, when we go, uh, to demonstrations, when something's wrong and we need to see the people who are concerned about what's right, you're gonna be there. And so I just love you so much. I thank you for your friendship and how you've been there for me and my family. And so, thanks so much and God bless you and wildly serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker, Mr. Rue, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. DJ, I mean. Um, thank you, Mr. President, uh, Councilmember Wesson for, uh, bringing Bobby here today and us, and for us to celebrate everything that she's done. And I don't, and I just want to rise and, and echo everybody's sentiments, but I'm not gonna repeat it all, but she is a titan in the community, in the labor movement, in the Democratic Party, and, um, I luckily never had those eyes. Um, but, you know, scarier than those eyes, I've seen it, is the, you know, the over-the-shoulder eyes? What? He said, "What?" So I, I never had them on me, but I've seen them. Um, but personally, uh, you know, I, I really thank you, Bobby, for everything you've done for me. Um, when, uh, like Councilmember Gil Sadio said, when I ran, um, nobody was, pretty much nobody was with me, but you were. And, um, and not just yourself, but you got the whole New Frontiers who were with me from the beginning. And, uh, I really thank you, um, and it was because I knew you working in the trenches. And, um, and you led the way. You paved the way for all of us, uh, younger, uh, Democrats who came later to follow. So I thank you for all of your service to, to the community, uh, to the labor movement, to the Democratic Party, and to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so very much, and thank you for doing this, Council President Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Wesson, back to you.
All right, to close this out, uh, Brother Johnson, if you could bring me. And I'll just say this, for the first five years that I knew Bobby, I think all of her clothes were purple, you know? Anyway, so on behalf, uh, of all of the members of the Los Angeles City Council, we would like to recognize you on this day, uh, Bobby Jean, and thank you so much for your service. Let's give her the round of applause that she deserved. All right, it's you. I'm gonna have Ed hold this, and the mic is yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to thank, uh, President Wesson and the entire City Council for this recognition. I'm humbled by it. The things that I do, I do because I see a need and I try to fulfill it. I, uh, want to thank my family, which I constantly forget to do, but, uh, thank my son and my granddaughter who's here today, and my little cousin standing right there next to them, and all of my posse. They show up, they show up every time. And, uh, I accept this, uh, recognition on behalf of all of the activists, which are many around this, uh, well here. I also, I'm what, I, I thank Cardi G Woodson for declaring Black History Week. It started out as a week, but now it's a month. But I tell everyone that I celebrate my blackness every day of the 365. So I, I'm, you know, I appreciate the, uh, recognition, in fact, that it is Black History Month. I appreciate that. And, uh, not, not to be long, long-winded, what you say, I'm losing my wind now, but, uh, I just want to, uh, really show my gratitude to everyone that's here today and everyone's behind me. And, uh, the thing that I want to leave you with is a quote from Ma Angelo, and it says, "People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And you, and the Council President, made me feel very good today, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Bobby Jean Anderson, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
We're gonna go this way. We're gonna take some pictures. Thank you.
Okay, as they're making their way, call up, uh, Mr. Rue for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. 2019 is a very special year, because this year, on March 1st, we will celebrate the Centennial of the Independence Movement in Korea. The 3.1 Movement, named after the, after its birth on March 1st, is one of the most important movements in Korea and in the worldwide struggle for liberty and freedom. I'm so happy to be celebrating this day with Council General Juan Jung Kim of Korea, Laura John of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, Young Shin Kwan, Chairman of the Korean National Association Memorial Foundation, Elizabeth Lee of the 3.1 Women's Association in the United States of America, the Korean American Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles, the Pacific American Volunteer Association World Chapter, the National Unification Advisory Council Los Angeles Chapter, the Korean American Manufacturing Association, the Korean Community Lawyers Association, the Heritage of Korean Independence, the Southern California Korean Ministers Association. 100 years ago, Korea was not a free nation, but lived under the rule of Imperial Japan and suffered many injustices. But on March 1st, 1919, something changed. A group of incredibly brave students banded together across the nation and declared their freedom in a proclamation of Korean independence. It said, "We hereby proclaim the independence of Korea and the liberty of the Korean people. This we proclaim to all nations of the world in witness of human equality. This we proclaim to our descendants so that they may enjoy the inherent right to nationhood." With these words, these brave young people began a movement that not only extended across the Korean Peninsula, but across the world. Here in the United States, Tozan Anchang Ho, father of our great, of our dear friend Ralph An, who comes on many occasions, lived near USC at ti- at the time, heard the call for freedom and mobilized support. As a leader of the Korean National Association, he spoke in support of the 3.1 Movement, not just to Koreans living abroad, but to every defender of freedom. He spoke up and down California, from Honolulu to Hong Kong, Mexico City to Washington DC, raising money and sympathy for the Korean people. His fundraising and organizing led to his leadership of the Korean Provincial Government, which advocated for Korea's freedom in exile. In this struggle for freedom, many Koreans were imprisoned and killed, but ideas can never be killed. And once the movement for freedom began, there was nothing to stop it. Many brave souls gave their lives for a freedom they themselves would not know. One of those heroes were Yu Guansun, a female student who gave her life for the cause of freedom at the age of 17. She refused to recant her nationhood and fought for the cause of Korean independence to her last breath. 100 years later, Korean people worldwide owed a debt of gratitude to people like Yu Guansun and Tozan Anchang Ho. As we join today to celebrate this day and remember the brave leaders who made the movement possible, let us remember their words as written in the Declaration of Korean Independence. "Today, our only duty is to rebuild ourselves, not to demolish others. It is to explore our new destiny according to the solemn dictates of our conscience, not to squabble with others over fleeting grudges and old animosities." With that, I'd like to invite up Council General of the Republic of Korea to say a few words.
Just give him a round of applause. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Yeah, Mr. President and distinguished Councilmember, uh, thank you for having me here, uh, this morning at this auspicious hall of the City Council. Uh, I'm the appropriate Council General based here in Los Angeles, so I'm truly honored and privileged to say a word of appreciation for the resolution, uh, that is the centennial anniversary of March 1st Independent Movement of Korea. I truly value and treasure the, this friendly and historic resolution by, by the City Council together with our more than half a million Korean-American residents in the greater Los Angeles area. Thank you so much. 감사합니다.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Council General. Now the leader of the wonderful Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, Laura John.
Good morning. As President of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, I'm pleased to be here to thank you for commemorating the 100th anniversary of March 1st Korean Independence Movement Day. March 1st is symbolic for Koreans across the globe. March 1st, 1919, was a pivotal turning point in Korea's resistance movement when mass demonstrations began in Seoul and soon spread throughout Korea, forming the largest national protest rallies against the foreign domination in Korean history. March 1st is a part of a series of events that occurred in 1919 towards Korean independence. This year also marks the 100th anniversary of February 8th, when the Declaration of Independence for Korea was secretly drafted in Tokyo by those who bravely began the movement in the streets of Japan, and April 11th, when the Korean Provisional Government was established in Shanghai by Korean patriots to help Korea make more concerted efforts toward achieving independence. After 35 years of Japanese rule, the Korean Peninsula was liberated by our allies on August 15th, 1945. The city of Los Angeles shares a historical connection to Korean independence. Early leaders such as Tozan An- Early leaders such as Tozan An Chang Ho called Los Angeles home and continued their work on behalf of the movement. So, on behalf of the Korean American community, I would like to commend Consul President Wesson and the honorable Consul Members for passing this resolution to proclaim the 100th anniversary of March 1st Korean Independence Movement Day. We would also like to cordially invite everyone to commemorate at the 3.1 Centennial Parade on this Saturday, March 2nd, at 2:00 PM. The parade will be on Wilshire Boulevard from Normandy to Oxford Avenues, and it will include reenactments of some of our patriots' achievements in 1919. Please join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Now, the Chairman of the Korean National Association Memorial Foundation, Young Shin Kwan.
Good morning. My name is Young Kwan. I'm the Chairman of the Korean National Association Memorial Foundation, KNA, established in 1909, 110 years ago. KNA Memorial Foundation stands to honor to our early Korean American patriot, unwavering desire and commitment toward a free nation. We serve as a platform to understand Korean American history, who we are to take pride on ourselves, to share the achievement of the early Korean independence movement leaders and keep their vision alive. So, it's given me great pleasure to be here and to thanks all of and the city of Los Angeles for honoring the 100th anniversary of the March 1st Korean Independence Movement Day. Our forefathers would be so proud. Thank you. 감사합니다.
감사합니다. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, from the 3.1 Women's Association in the United States of America, Ms. Elizabeth Lee.
저는 미주 삼일성 동지회 회장 이연주입니다. 미주 삼일 여성 동지회는 삼일 운동 참가자와 그 후손이 LA에 와서 창립한 애국 단체입니다. 미주 오늘 LA시에서 삼일 운동 100주년 기념 선보식을 개최한 것에 깊은 감사를 드립니다. LA시는 역사적으로 일제강제기에 그 시절부터 한국의 독립을 열망하고 지지해 왔습니다. 특히 LA시는 1942년에 외국의 대도시로서는 세계 최초로 LA시청 광장의 우리의 태극기를 공식적으로 개향하여 한국의 독립을 지지해 준 것에 매우 감사한 도시로 생각하고 있습니다. 진심으로 LA시 의회와 LA시민들에게 다시 한번 감사드립니다. 감사합니다.
Thank you.
Hi, I'll be translating the President's words. Good morning, my name is Elizabeth Lee, President of the March 1st Women's Association in the United States. Our association was founded by the activists of the March 1st independence movement of Korea and was thereafter established in Los Angeles by their descendants. I would like to thank all of you very much for holding today's proclamation of the centennial anniversary of the March 1st independence movement in Korea. Historically, the city of Los Angeles has been supportive of the independence of Korea. In particular, the city of Los Angeles was first among the major cities in the world to raise our Korean national flag, which was hoisted at City Hall in 1942. Once again, we sincerely thank the Los Angeles City Council and the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before I present the proclamation, there is a saying that is done by the independence movement fighters. And when I say 대한민국, and everyone could join along, when I say 대한민국, everyone says 만세 with their arms up. Now, what that is, is 대한민국 is Republic of Korea, and 만세 is roughly translated ho ray, but it also means peace and freedom for thousands of years. So, that's the saying of 만세. So, I'm gonna say, well, I'm gonna have Ms. Elizabeth Lee start it off, and we're gonna do it three times.
대한독님 만세!
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 Thank you, colleagues.
Ah, the beauty of independence.
And with that, I'd like to present this proclamation on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to the Korean American community on the day of March 1st.
Just give him another round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Rue. Okay, colleagues, at this point, we'll now turn to general public comment. Speakers will have one minute to speak on a non-agenda item. So with that, I'd like to invite Eric Previn to come forward. Start us time, please.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and there are a number of items on the agenda that have caught my attention because you're doing R. permits, which is a kind of a workaround for vacations of property in Studios District. There's, you're closing a street in Blooming Fields District. He's not in, actually, it's on Victory. I think it's in Blooming Fields District. The LFD Foundation is getting a lease. You've got, CD10 is naming things. Naming during campaigns is very awkward. I want to just say thank you to Bobby Jean Anderson also for all of her devoted work, and also to Nicole Chase, both of whom are candidates who are widely respected, who came down or are on the agenda today in support of Consul President Wesson. It's a little bit of a line cross as we've been discussing the influence and the use of public resources improperly to advantage yourselves, and I've talked about it before. For example, now, you'll note that I appear tiny, but they appeared in life-size color. So that's a real...
Okay, Herman, you're up.
Fuck you for violating my fucking right, you fucking public comment! You motherfucker, public fucking trust! You don't fucking observe fucking public trust! You fucking rotten motherfucker, Italian, you too! You motherfucker! You motherfucker! I do not speak English because of Jew, motherfucker! I cannot read English, motherfucker! You fucking puto! You, 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 you! This is in light of the duty, you motherfucker!
Mr. President, the speaker is not speaking on any matter that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body.
Okay, your time is forfeited. Next speaker, next speaker is Audrey Mitchell. Okay, now you're disrupting this meeting. Okay, you are now being warned you're disrupting this meeting. Again, general public comments. Okay, let's now remove Mr. Herman from the chambers. Thank you. You've got to go. Goodbye. Goodbye, you gotta go. He continues to disrupt this meeting. Madam City Attorney.
Yes, the speaker has been ordered removed, and I recommend that we hold the rest of public comment until he's been removed from the room.
Thank you.
Rules that if you get removed, you're removed from some extended time? Can you go over that with us very, very quickly? Because it seems like they're still here every day during the same exact thing.
Again, for the record, Mr. Herman continues to disrupt this meeting as he's walking out. So, Madam City Attorney? Madam City, I'll ask our city attorney to respond to Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson's concerns.
This would be his disruption. If he were to disrupt another meeting today or within the next three business days, he would be asked to not return to the following meeting for those days.
But he just disrupted on Wednesday.
I'll take this back to my office, and we'll look at the disruptions.
Mr. Krikorian?
I just want to make sure that the record was clear, because sometimes the mics don't pick it up, that Mr. Herman, in the middle of Mr. Harris Dawson's comments, was continuing to shout, long after he had been removed, ordered removed from the meeting, he was continuing to shout out racist comments from the audience. So, the actual work of this council was delayed as we waited for him, and then a member of this council was attempting to speak and was being shouted down by Mr. Herman from the audience after he had been ordered removed.
Thank you for that, Mr. Krikorian. Our next speaker is Audrey Mitchell. I don't see Audrey Mitchell. Red Chief?
Red Chief?
Red Chief, come forward, one minute.
Thank you for using my correct name. Ms. City Attorney, we are gonna have some problems. You guys, he violated the Brown Act with Norris versus the City of Los Angeles, but you can't ban him from any other meeting. That's the law. It came down in Dow versus the City of Los Angeles. You guys, be aware that I'm aware of what you guys are doing, so I appreciate that, but he said fuck too many times, so that's Norris versus, what's the name? So, please beware that I'm in here and I'm monitoring the meeting, so you guys have to pay attention. You guys can't ban anybody. You guys can put him out, but you guys can actually ban him from coming in, because that's illegal. Dow versus the City of Los Angeles, I sat there with Dean Bragerson and the whole concept, so please be aware and don't bring any more lawsuits on yourself. Thank you, the Red Chief Hunt.
Next speaker is Alita Barnes. Are you here? Alita Barnes? Is no one here by that name? Peter Kwan? Peter Kwan? Joe? Is there a Joe in the audience? No? How about Richard? You're speaking under general public comment, and you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning. For the past month and a half, I've been trying to obtain from the Department of Public Works Investigation Enforcement Division a personnel complaint form, so a complaint could be filed against one of their investigators. Finally got one today, but the biggest problem I'm having is I asked for the description on how they investigate under 832.5. They made it very clear that they will not give it to me, even though they're post-certified, they will not provide it for me. As usual, they, for me to obtain this personnel complaint form, I was, they were trying to require me to show ID, because that's the law, according to the individual. And then, once they stated that they're represented by counsel, I ceased. I attempted to contact their counsel. Their attitude is, you gotta talk to our client. That's just one big problem. Under 832.5A1, I'm entitled to know what the procedures are and shall be done in writing, and I'm being discounted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak under general public comment that hasn't signed up? Do you want to come up, sir? After you're done speaking, I do need you to fill out a card for me in the back. What is your name?
My name is Louis Payne.
Good morning. You have one minute under general public comment.
Kabish. I think it would be in the best interest of Los Angeles County and the world to start recognizing the middle class, the low class, as human beings than bi particles. Thank you for letting me share.
Okay, thank you, sir. And that's the last speaker under general public comment, so Madam Clerk, can we please close general public comment under our regular meeting? And let's revisit our regular meeting and begin our special meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Busqueino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weesa, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, 12 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, what's the first item?
First item is number 10, and there is a request to continue this item to Tuesday, February 26th.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. That's the only item in special meeting, is that correct?
That is correct.
We have to go ahead and adjourn our special meeting and return to our regular meeting.
And Madam President, council has motions for posting a referral.
Posting and referring members, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Can we all rise for adjourned motions? Can I, can please ask the members of the public out of respect to, could please rise for adjourned motions? Any of the adjourned motions to my right? Ms. Rodriguez, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, today we adjourn in the memory of Reverend Dudley Chapman, who passed away on February 9th. Dudley Duane Chapman was born on September 19th, 1935, in Huntsville, Alabama. He received his bachelor's degree from Washington Jefferson University, Washington and Jefferson University College in Pennsylvania, his master's degree from the University of Pittsburgh, and his bachelor's of theology degree from Western Theological Seminary. He served as second lieutenant in the US Army Airborne Rangers at Fort Still in Frederick, Oklahoma. After serving honorably, was discharged from the Army, and he began serving as a pastor at various churches in Pennsylvania and California. In 1987, he became the pastor of Greater Community Missionary Baptist Church in Pacoima, where he served until his death. Reverend Chapman was a very active member of our community and mentored many local pastors who considered Reverend Chapman as the father in the ministry. He served on the Los Angeles Community Redevelopment Agency for several years, influencing the development of major shopping centers around Pacoima, and in 1995 was elected president of the San Fernando Valley Interfaith Council, becoming the first non-white president. He continued to serve on the board and on his area senior center advisory council until his recent passing. Reverend Chapman made sure that his church was a welcoming place to serve the most vulnerable. The church was a Red Cross certified emergency disaster site and is currently home to the only winter shelter in the San Fernando Valley. He is survived by his wife of 40 years, Beth Chapman, six children, six grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. Services will be held tomorrow, this Saturday, February 23rd, at the Greater Community Baptist Church in Pacoima at 10:00 AM. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. If you don't mind adding me to the adjourned motion, he was a good friend of myself and my family, known Diddy for such a long time, was an amazing, amazing person and advocate for the poor in the northeast San Fernando Valley, so if you can add me to your adjourned motion. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Sadio? No? Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Have a good weekend, everyone. Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Have a good weekend, everyone.